In the city of Goodyear and we are seeking a budget amount of $100,000. And at this station, what we're looking to do is have this artwork be architecturally[10.84][10.87]integrated, which means we want to have the artwork actually affixed to the building. Now, a lot of this will depend on working with the designers on how that building is placed on the piece of land so that we ensure that we have great view corridors for the public. We really want to be innovative and creative and do something really unique here that gives that station its own identity. Moving on to future fiscal years, as Aubrey mentioned, we did have to postpone the installation of the artwork on traffic cabinets, but this is such a great program, we hope to continue this in future fiscal years. And we'll be coming back to council in fiscal year 2022 to talk about potentially adding more artwork to traffic cabinets around our city. In fiscal year 2023, the Arts Commission is recommending a project at Bullard Wash Park. And I'm really excited about this project because of Civic Square coming. This Bullard Wash Park is an amazing park. And with Civic Square, it's going to create this accessibility to the park that we haven't had up to this point. And this will be a great opportunity to put artwork in the park. We are proposing to do six sculptural panels that really capitalize on the fact that this is a linear park because they can be installed along a pathway that will really encourage people to travel throughout the park. And with having multiple panels, it's really about storytelling at this time. This could even potentially be something historical. It could be a historical timeline that we work on. But they are asking for a budget level of $250,000 for this project, and it would really instill civic pride and be a great location for it. The final project on our plan is in fiscal year 2024. It's a Western Avenue Gateway project. The Arts Commissioners are recommending an archway that would go over Western Avenue, be located near Palmentier Park, near the crosswalk. And the budget level on that is $380,000. During our budget meetings, we did receive a couple comments from council members. And tonight is the night that we can further that discussion. And we're eager to hear council's comments and take their guidance on this project. So along with, as I said, in the ordinance, we are to make recommendations for the next five years. I wanted to share also some of the other projects the commissioners are considering, because when they look at public art, they do consider things such as looking at the city in its entirety and where public art is located, making sure we're putting projects, you know, in areas where public is at. Additionally, they like to really engage with the community as well as create cultural tourism. So some of these projects that they're considering in the future would be looking at Goodyear Community Park in the stage area there, creating an artistic created shade element or an iconic piece that really is eye catching when you enter into Goodyear Community Park. Looking at our Park de Paz in our north subdivision and wanting to do a project that's really community led there with community members create the artwork. And it really becomes about the process at this point. And the final project is a reminder of what that process was. Additionally, we're exploring South Goodyear and opportunities there, whether it's right away installations or elevated artworks, as well as still exploring the path of doing a destination public artwork that may be off the beaten path to appeal to cultural tourists. The final piece of our presentation tonight is a little off from public art, but you know, the Arts Commission really looks at the arts holistically for the city of Goodyear and how we appeal to our residents and visitors. And so we wanted to share some of the programming opportunities that they're exploring for the future. One of these would be a Shakespeare in the Park. Again, Bullard Wash Park has this wonderful amenity there. It has this wonderful amphitheater that would be an ideal location for this type of program. Not only do we want to bring a new performance to our city, we'd like to run it as a community theater because we'd love to see Goodyear residents actually performing on the stage as well. Another one is we have a partnership with Alice Cooper Solid Rock Foundation, and we'd really like to work with them to do a new music series called Goodyear Rocks to create a platform for young emerging youth musicians to be able to perform in our city. We have a holiday variety concert that we are proposing. We would like to work with our local high schools to use the Performing Arts Center and have a nice program where we invite our West Valley Performing Arts Groups, our choral groups, our symphony, our dancers, our theater groups, and bring them all together for a seated concert where you can get dressed up and go with your family and enjoy a nice holiday performance. Another program that we're very excited about is our Historic Goodyear Mural Program. We have been working with Catitude Arts for five years now, and they run the Follow Your Art Junior Program every summer, which is 14 artists that are looking to go into the arts as a career. A spinoff from this is Mural Mentoring. Bonnie Lewis, a Goodyear resident and professional artist, has been working with teens. They've painted our Goodyear Skate Park mural as well as a traffic cabinet in our city. And their next adventure is going to be doing murals in Historic Goodyear. And the first mural they would like to create is to paint panels that would be installed in Palmentier Park. We'd like to affix them to the chain link fence that covers the well site. Be a great way to illustrate our vibrant history and beautify that that area of the park. The final program on here is part of our Art in the Park series. It would be Art in the Park After Dark. And this is called Poetry Illuminated. We do a really great job. We have great performing arts and visual arts. We want to start exploring and working with our creative writers in our community. And we want to invite Goodyear residents to create original poems that then would be illuminated onto the sidewalk in the park at nighttime so you could stroll through and enjoy the words that they've written and shared. These programs, we do not have the budget for these, but these will come up in the future for supplemental requests and other funding opportunities as we explore bringing these programming opportunities online. So the Arts and Culture Commission has big plans for the future. Goodyear has become a hub for the arts in in the West Valley. You know, as all of you are aware, our Arts Commissioners are extremely active and they're very passionate about the arts and how they can use arts as a tool to really strengthen sense of community and really enhance our quality of life in our city. And they're just doing a great job with it. So with that, we are here seeking council's approval of the recommended fiscal year 2021 annual public art plan. And with that, that concludes our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Nice presentation. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? But you're going to come down. You can't speak yet. Sorry. So I need a motion a second to approve FY 2021 Annual Public Art Plan as recommended by the Arts and Culture Commission. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion from Councilman Kano and a second from Councilman Stip. Open now. Councilman Pizzillo, you may talk.
Even though I'm disappointed disappointed on your traffic cabinets, because that's something I'm really proud about. So you're going to be carrying it over from this budget year because it's going to end up in the fall. The 10 that you've identified, do you have the actual designs set in that yet from the artists?
Mayor, Councilmember Pizzillo, yes, the artists have already created the designs. They've worked with the Arts Commission on that. We are ready to go. We just need to get the weather to the right place to where we can get them out there to be able to actually apply the artwork to the cabinets.
And I understand that. Is it possible to to see those 10, those 10 designs?
Yes.
I would love to see those 10 designs that that you've, if they're already done and you know what you're going to be using on it. Because I think it really adds a lot to our city. I'm a little prejudiced because my favorite one is the one at the park that we have there next to the fire station, the one with the little girl and the butterfly. That's my favorite. Okay. But again, I think it really adds to the city and especially with the artists, using the local artists on that. The other comment has to do with the School of Rock. You know, I've seen them perform at several events. Alice Cooper's school does them proud by the kids that are coming out of that. And I would really look forward to you being able to use those those kids at some of our events.
Thank you. Next, Councilman Laura Tano.
First of all, I want to thank you and your whole commission. And you just do an excellent work. I have to agree with Joe. One of my favorite things in it, literally when I'm driving to work or driving somewhere and I see those cabinets, it's just like, oh, they're so pretty. I mean, it really does lighten your day. So those are great. I agree with everything. I love what you've done at the fire stations. I love the Roadrunner. I told you that up at Australia. I think that really does fit in. For your programming opportunities, I would love to see the Goodyear Rocks and the Shakespeare in the Park, those type of things, if we could move those up. Because I think that is something, especially once we get past COVID, people are really going to want to go outside together and enjoy these experiences together as families and as groups that we haven't been able to do. So if there's some way we could move those up and not make them so far in the future, I would I would love that. I think that's a great idea, especially with the opening of the city square down there. The only question I have that I'm kind of iffy on, and it's not that it's a bad idea, but maybe because it's so far out, that'll give time to figure out exactly how to do it, is that archway? Because we just are selling those buildings. And I know, and I guess for me, that the whole thing is, I don't know if it's quite ready yet until we know exactly with the museum, if maybe that will give some idea to how the art should look. But that may not be a problem because it's not till 2024. So I don't have a problem with it. I just don't know if we want to nail down exactly what it is till we kind of know how that corner is going to, it's really going to brighten up once we sell those buildings and see who goes in there and something. So that would be my only comment, but great plan. And I do fully support it. And hopefully we can move some stuff up. I don't know if we have some other funding to do that somehow, but I would love to. Thank you. And one more thing. Thank you all for putting everything online and reaching out to our community, because I know it was very hard for people who wanted to enjoy things. And you and the Parks Department just stepped it up. So thank you.
Councilman Kano?
Well, I also want to give a great big thanks to you. Hey, Fran, I can see you around the corner. You and the entire commission. And I did want to lead up with with Councilman Laura Tano's comment about how you pivoted so well in the face of having to shut down most of our activities and and made so many things virtual and online and including chalk art in the park and just really pushed out a lot of content, a lot of things out in the community. And so very, very creative. I like how you honor the history of our region in when you're planning, but you're also very forward looking because that's important. It's sort of both and are really critical. Where did we come from? But where are we going? And you guys are really visionary. And I think that's important. I do like seeing the increase of the amount for public art at the fire stations. I think we found that 40,000 was too limiting, that you couldn't do the architectural interest things. And so you you get these standalone statues which have their value. But I think having that bigger vision would really well serve the the new fire stations and the communities they serve. So I really like that. I know we have a huge crowds that's missing the hot coffees. That's been just such a popular thing. And so looking forward to when we are able to get back to gathering again. I also want to say I appreciate how you recognize that the role of the arts play, public art plays with economic development and community vitality. You're not a standalone organization. You really are integrated into the vision and in the planning in the city. So thank you for the work that you've done. I also wanted to thank Councilman Pizzillo for, even when I was on the commission and he was advocating then for the traffic cabinets, and you really build a legacy. So well done.
Next, any other conversation? Vice Mayor?
Thanks for the presentation. Thank you for the for the work that you guys are doing. It's always exciting to see the different things that come up year after year. I've got kind of a generic question about the intent tonight. The intent tonight is for the 2021 budget, but you have presented a number of projects that go forward into 2024. Approving this plan tonight, does that automatically approve those projects going forward?
Mayor, Vice Mayor Stip, that's a great question. So we come back to you each year with the projects. And so the way the ordinance is written, we really are just seeking approval for the art projects that are in the immediate fiscal year. So it's for 2021. The rest of the projects are just projections that we're making so that we can kind of have this process now and get this feedback so that we can make adjustments as we need to for your future fiscal years.
Okay, so I'm going to recap what I just heard, make sure that I'm understanding it. So the only thing you're really asking for, quote unquote, tonight is approval for the public art for Fire Station 188?
This is correct.
Okay. Moving on. I also agree with Councilmember Laura Tano about these, what I'm referred to as cultural events as opposed to art events, things that were in your last, the last slide, the Shakespeare or some of that other. I think those, those may have a greater impact on the community now as opposed to later, that I realize we're only approving one piece of public art, and it's for our public facility. But I think getting those cultural events into the community raise the awareness. As much as I appreciate, and I think everybody does, seeing the banners and whatnot, having that event is the thing that that I think sparks some of the, from the non-art guy, that's, that's what I'm telling you. From my perspective, that's where it's coming from. So just to give that some consideration. And then finally, since you brought brought up our concerns during the during the budget discussion, I have great concerns about the cost and the project of the archway. And I mentioned it that night. It didn't really dawn on me until I read the the presentation for tonight about the, it didn't resonate that we really don't have any public art in South Goodyear. It just, it didn't even dawn on me until I read it. And I think if we're gonna, if we're gonna look at a $400,000 investment in art, that perhaps we need to, we need to move to start getting some of those pieces elsewhere, even if that means partnering with with Newland and their, I think it's called the Star Center or whatever that.
Star Point.
Star Point, that I would say the twisted thing that goes up, but yeah.
Stargazer.
Yeah, what this, yeah. Yeah, my inner geek is going to come out real quick. So I'm going to stop right there. Anyway, the, but I think we've got some partnership opportunities with Newland and 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 the Australia community personally in the in that out year, and I think that was 2024 or something, that may be a good opportunity for us to look to do something down there in in the southern part of the city as opposed to trying to do yet another project along Western until we until, and I, someone mentioned it, till we really know what it's going to look like and what it's going to, what it's going to turn into. We don't want to neglect it. And I think we've done something at Palmentier Park. We've done it Parker de Paz. So we're, we're not ignoring that section. But I think when it comes to a sizable project like that, perhaps looking elsewhere to get it started there and then return to Western Avenue may be a better strategy. That's just my perspective. And we've had an email exchange, Gailene and I, but I do, I'm looking forward to an answer. Nathan's smiling back there. How to spend my money in the last three weeks of the month to get a public art project going. So looking forward to that. Thank you so much for all your work.
Yes, Councilman Campbell?
Thank you. Thank you for the report. I too am concerned about the archway over Western. I don't right now feel it is appropriate use of our city funds to do that until we know specifically what we're going to do with that area. So perhaps the Art Commission could think of something else. Well, maybe do it in another area than than there. I just don't, we don't know what we're even doing back there yet. So to put this beautiful archway, and I'm sure it'll be beautiful, I don't know that we can justify it. Because there's not a lot of people that will see it. And as long as we're not, if we're voting on your budget tonight, and that does not include that, that I'm in favor of your budget. However, that being said, I'm excited to see some of these projects. I really like you having public art that people can touch and use and sit on or climb on or something that we just don't have to look at it. And I just think if the public is able to do that, they own it because it's their art as well. And I just encourage you to continue to do that, not only in our parks, but anytime we're thinking of putting something, I know the beautiful sculpture and everything, we're doing it all in fire stations. They're lovely, but we don't have a lot of public that goes to the fire stations, seriously. And we may drive by it and see it, but we may not. So that would not necessarily be appropriate for touchy and beely and climb all over it type of art. But in other areas where the public is, it would be nice to have that. And also, I would like to encourage you for the amphitheater. Once we do have parking, which we do not have now, it is too difficult to get to that amphitheater unless you park in front of Cal Ranch and carry all your stuff through between the buildings or out at the street. It's just not convenient. But honestly, once we get our city hall built and a parking lot built, I'm sure that's going to be a wonderful gathering place for us. And it will be used. I think I do recall one time we used it years ago for something, and it just wasn't worth it. It was so much effort to carry everything in. And we just decided we wouldn't do that again unless we could have an amphitheater where we could park by and bring our amplifiers and our music and our horns and everything. So I'm excited that you're looking at that as well. So we, in fact, that whole Bullard Wash will be open once there's a parking lot there. And I expect to see all of our residents using it from one end to the other. And we may, you may want to put a piece of art there, more than just the murals. I mean, you may want to do something really creative there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next, Councilman Hampton?
Yeah, I also agree. Thank you so much for all the hard work. I know it's, I mean, probably hard to figure out all the best uses for the dollars that we're allocating. So I appreciate your creativity and just creating these different ideas. So I like all of them. I guess to everybody else's point, I know we're only approving 2021. So I'm okay leaving the arch on there out to 2024 because I know year, every year we'll be able to reassess and change and things. I'd like to see that more art in the south, southern part of the the city as well. And really, the only cultural place we have is Long Western Avenue, even though we have such a small section of that. But but to everybody's point, we don't know what's going to be down there yet and where to put it, where to put the arch. So but I like the idea of an arch somewhere in the city, maybe a couple arches in the city. But I do also like the idea of creating art, like in the geographic center of Goodyear, like the idea of the painted rocks and having something unique and a surprise and a destination somewhere in Goodyear as well, and just things that are built in to our everyday lives of the traffic cabinets and the signs on those on the poles and the lights and just all the, all that kind of artwork. I think it's great, too. So I also like bringing forward some of these Shakespeare in the Park, Goodyear Rocks, the variety concerts. I don't know if, it seemed like a lot of people were interested in doing that as well. I don't know if we can approve that tonight or if that's something we need to have a separate motion for. But I know they're only really asking for $100,000.
What part you're talking about?
Adding on the budget for, or approving the only $100,000 tonight, but it seemed like a few of us were wanting to pull up. I don't know if they're ready for it, but the 15, 12, and 10,000 dollar projects, the programming opportunities. So I don't know if that's something we do now or if we just wait for supplements in the future. So but that's a general question. I don't know if anybody has an answer for that.
Yeah, well, let's ask the lawyer and see where we are on that.
I am, excuse me, Mayor. I'm looking at the notice to make sure that it's something we could do, but I may need a couple minutes on that.
Yes, thank you. Take your time.
Okay. But yeah, I do appreciate your creativity. I think it has a lot of culture to the community. I think it'd be great for one day to have a community art center in Goodyear in the future. Or I think arts are just valuable to the community, really ties everything together and just unites us and just makes it more positive a place to live. So thank you so much.
I think all the council has spoken. Yes, Joe, you have something else?
I guess waiting to hear back from the city attorney, but I also, if it was possible, once this virus thing clears up or whatever, I agree with Councilmember Laura Tano and the others that if you could get Goodyear Rocks and you could get Shakespeare in the Park up a little earlier, you know, for people, because they're going to be all pent up from being locked up inside, if they can get out and enjoy some of that in this upcoming fiscal year, I think there's value in that.
Yes, Phil?
This is going to be a shocking statement for me, but the money part is easy. I think it's the staff capacity to get it done. So we may say, we want this, and you can say, I can do this. So before we get all excited about what you can and can't, can't do, I think as we get ready to move forward, we need to hear from you. We go, we want 10, and you go, I can do two. So what's the answer to that?
And and that's a great way to look at it. I believe capacity wise, that we could move forward in next fiscal year to make those events happen for you. We have to explore the strategies and how that goes about to put them together. We have to wait till we actually can gather together again. So you know, we have a lot of things in flux at this time, but capacity wise, yes, we could do it. But there has to be some exploration and getting the right parties in place and making sure that we can go forward with gathering. But thank you, everyone, for the comments on that.
Can I say something before that? Because then you're going to say something we have to probably add to?
I was just going to talk about the funding piece of it.
Yes, okay. So let me just express it. Thank you. I'm excited by some of the great art you're going to put up. I like what you're doing at the fire stations. And and yes, Bill, I can't take shocks. So just, you know, don't do that all the time, okay? But I, people love the cabinets. I think it's, I love the creativity. I love some modern in there. I love things that people go, what? You know, and then they have to go and investigate it. So and I think it, I think it raises the culture and the education for our young people. All right. It gives them the opportunity to see life in a different form. So I'm 100% behind you. So I think we have to go to the city manager on a question that was given tonight. Go ahead, Julie.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. With regard to funding, should council approve the art plan as presented tonight? It does include these components. And after hearing from council, we can get together and bring it back as an item for council's consideration as far as funding goes.
Okay.
As you might recall, we set aside some special contingency dollars, and this could come back.
So we don't change anything in in what in this part?
Right.
Good. Everybody got that? Bill, you're looking perplexed. Everybody got, okay, good. I think, I think the discussion is finished. So let's follow it. All in favor, say aye? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, and the ayes have it. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
I know, I know.
The next item on business is number 13, to consider approving the workers' compensation Arizona Municipal Risk Retention Pool. Human Resources Director Lyman Lockett presenting.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I'm here to bring forward a recommendation to adopt resolution number 2020-2059, transitioning the city's workers' compensation coverage to Arizona Municipal Risk Retention Pool, otherwise known as AMR RP, and approve the associated expenditures for fiscal 21. Earlier this year, we embarked on an effort to evaluate all available options for our workers' compensation coverage for the city. This exercise included looking at self funded or self insured coverage options. And although self insured models are a viable option for many cities, our assessment indicated that it wasn't prudent to move in this direction at this time. Our assessment refocuses on looking at fully insured coverage models. We subsequently launched an RFP in April of this year. Just before launching our RFP, our current provider, Copper Point, announced that they would be exiting the workers' compensation market in Arizona. The RFP process yielded two bids. And in addition, and as a current member of AMRP for our property and casualty insurance, we received a bid proposal from them. The current, and the two bids received from the RFP process unfortunately did not meet our criteria. They were from brokerage firms and fell short of what we were looking for from a fully insured provider. We have, however, found both what we feel is a viable and well suited option for our workers' compensation in AMRP. AMRP is a municipal governed risk AMR RP is a municipal governed risk pool dedicated solely to cover the risk and management solutions for Arizona cities and towns. AMR RP provides coverage for seventy-six cities and towns and cover almost two, twelve thousand workers throughout the state of Arizona. So they are in our wheelhouse with regards to municipal government. They also have some innovative tools that we're excited about that we think will help our employees, one of which is Triage Now, which is a twenty-four-seven telephonic nurse triage service for injured employees. This is both an intake and immediate care platform for employees. From a fiscal impact perspective, we do not anticipate any major changes in the projected workers' compensation coverage budget for 2021, fiscal year 2021. The estimated premium and deductible of nine hundred and fifty thousand is expected to be similar in cost to that we were anticipating from Copper Point had they not left the market. This includes a rate reduction due to our workers' compensation experience rating resulting in a savings of about a hundred thousand over last year. We anticipate a seamless transition with the following plan. Coordinating with our onsite wellness center is already underway, having some initial discussions there. All existing claims will continue to be handled by Copper Point through the life of the claim. Initial meetings have also been held with regard to stakeholder needs to give them an understanding of AMR RP, what their offerings are, and our tentative rollout plan. These stakeholders included union members who were involved in the RFP process, fire NPD, health and safety officers, and members of our safety committee. We are planning on conducting employee training the last two weeks of June. And if approved, the AMR RP processes will go into effect July 1, 2020. We recommend that council adopt the resolution and approve the associated expenditures. And this ends my presentation.
Thank you. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Does anyone in the audience want to speak? Will the city clerk please read Resolution Number 2020-2059 by title only, please?
Adopt Resolution Number 2020-2059, approving the city's workers' compensation coverage to be administered through the Arizona Municipal Risk Retention Pool.
Thank you. Can I have a motion a second to approve Resolution Number 2020-2059? Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Second. I heard Vice Mayor make the motion, and I heard Councilwoman Bazillo make the second. Open for council discussion. Councilwoman Bazillo?
Lyman, I appreciate all the effort in this. We weren't quite sure where this was going after Copper, you know, Point had pulled out. My question to you, since they have pulled out, as far as those that are not self-insured, is the majority of those cities going to end up going into this pool?
Many are. We know that Flagstaff, there are a few that are going self-funded. We're right at that point of decision, however, we're just not there yet. So there are some that are, they're picking up. In fact, that twelve thousand number, that's expected to rise just above twelve thousand with those that are coming to, over to the pool, so.
Yeah, I appreciate the decision on going into the pool only because we don't know where we're going with this yet. I don't think the legislature has addressed the issue that they were going to address as far as when it comes to the cancer issue with firefighters. So it would be nice to just to get a feeling where some of these claims are going to be coming, not being self-insured to take that type of hit initially till we figure out where we're kind of going with it. So, yeah, I agree with the efforts to put us in this pool.
Yes, Councilman Laura Tano?
I agree. Thank you for all your hard work because there wasn't a lot to choose from. It sounds like it's pretty much a very empty market right now. My question is, with Copper Point exiting, they're going to cover the one claims that they know about, but what if there's a claim that could have arisen partially before we got the new insurer, partially after? Does the new insurer just, the risk pool just take the whole claim then?
If it's a claim that's reopened based on a prior injury, Copper Point would continue to manage that claim. If it's a new injury, then AMR RP would then take over.
Okay, because my question was like, with some of these cancer claims, we're not sure when they started. It's a history, so those would be with the new?
Yeah, they, in general, those would be based on the exposure, the time of exposure. So if it happened under, yes, under Copper Point, deemed to have happened under Copper Point, Copper Point would handle those claims.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're not, we don't have like a donut hole there for anybody to fall through or anything.
Yeah, it's a little, you know, time of exposure is critical. So where the claim lands obviously would have to be looked at. But generally, if it is something that would be, have happened prior to AMR RP taking over, Copper Point would own that claim.
Well, thank you. Thank you for all your hard work.
Anybody else?
Mayor.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, Lyman, thank you for this. Other than those that are currently under, or have an open claim currently, which Copper Point is managing, this ends our relationship with Copper Point effectively.
That's correct.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, and I should add that we will continue to be in contact with Copper Point to help manage those claims as they run out. So we'll still have that relationship, however, our financial ties with Copper Point would cease July 1 or June 30th.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Bazillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Laura Tano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Keno?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Great, thank you for the discussion. Round fourteen on the business is to consider approving the CDBG entitlement. Grants and Neighborhood Services Supervisor Christian Panitas Q. She's now, oh, good. I don't have to worry about that, do I? Please announce yourself.
Hi, I'm Christina Panatesco, Grants and Neighborhood Services Supervisor for the City of Goodyear.
Yeah, I wanted people to know you actually have that last name, and they're familiar with you, so thank you very much.
I don't see the presentation. Oh, yep. Sorry, the mouse. Thank you. Thank you. Genie in the back. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am here to follow up on a business item from a work session a few weeks ago regarding the city's opportunity to pursue CDBG entitlement status. So this evening, I'll be reviewing what CDBG is, the advantages of entitlement, and the financial impact on the city, looking to you for action. As a reminder, and for the benefit of the public, CDBG is a HUD federal grant opportunity designed to provide decent housing, suitable living environment, and expanded economic opportunities primarily to low and moderate income individuals. Currently, the City of Goodyear participates as a part of the urban county, and we compete for an allocation against cities like Buckeye, El Mirage, Gila Bend, Queen Creek, Tolason, Youngtown, and unincorporated Maricopa County. We have participation on the CDAC Committee that reviews the applications and makes recommendations for funding levels to the County Board of Supervisors. Visually, this is what the current state looks like. The HUD allocation goes to Maricopa County, who is responsible for a great deal of administrative duties such as developing a five-year consolidated plan, an annual action plan, and all associated reporting and environmental reviews, labor compliance, et cetera. They have decided to use the CDAC group to review the applications and sometimes, and make subawards to entities like Goodyear who then deliver eligible projects and programs. They are responsible for auditing the City of Goodyear, and they are audited by HUD. As an entitlement community, what changes is that the direct allocation goes directly to the City of Goodyear, and our council gets to establish, based on our five-year consolidated plan and annual action plan, which eligible projects to use the funds for. We will then also be audited directly by HUD. So the advantages are that we are guaranteed annual funding based on the federal budget and that up to twenty percent of that allocation can be used for administrative costs. It gives us more flexibility in the types of projects we prioritize and opens the door to Section 108 loan programs. The disadvantages would be there is intensive startup effort and that ultimately, we foresee needing dedicated staff to administer the program. Our current allocation, given the administrative cap, would not cover the FTE anticipated if we were to have to fund that now. So it's possible that in the future, a subsidy from the general fund might be needed. To review, the city will be having to do a five-year consolidated plan and then can choose projects that meet the national objectives and are relevant to the five-year plan to spend our allocation. Using the example of a four hundred thousand dollar allocation, we could spend up to eighty thousand dollars on administrative costs, and that would leave three hundred and twenty thousand dollars available for eligible programs and projects. At least seventy percent of the funds spent on projects needs to benefit low mod income individuals, and the maximum of fifteen percent can be spent on direct services. Our next steps, if we were to move forward with entitlement, are to begin working on a five-year consolidated plan that will require us to look closely at affordable housing, homelessness, impediments to fair housing, and the community development needs and priorities for our community. We'll also, as a result of those efforts, come up with an annual action plan and develop policies and procedures for how to implement the CDBG program. We estimate this to cost fifty thousand dollars with the use of a consultant to assist us. And should we decide to recoup those costs from the CDB allocations, it would be an allowable expense. But it would eat into the twenty percent. So today, we are looking to you to authorize the city manager to take the necessary actions to obtain CDBD, CDBG entitlement status for the city.
Thank you. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? Do I need a motion and a second to authorize the city manager to take necessary actions to obtain the CDBG entitlement status for the city? Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion from Councilman Hampton and a second from Vice Mayor Stip. Conversation, council. Who would like to start? Councilwoman Campbell?
I have a couple of questions, if you don't mind. Is the four hundred thousand every year?
So that was just a round number example.
Whatever the round number is, is it just one allocation every year or one allocation that we have to spend for the five-year plan?
One, one per year.
One per year, okay. What happens to the project that was approved by the current CDBG for our lights in North Subdivision? Does that still go through them, even though we're trying now to pull out of it?
Yes, we were already allocated those funds. That's from this current fiscal year that we're entering into. And we're still a part of the urban county until June of twenty twenty-one.
Oh, twenty twenty, okay, great. So if, so we won't get the money until twenty twenty-one?
We won't get the money from HUD?
Yes.
Until, it would probably show up closer to twenty twenty-two.
Oh, twenty twenty-two, okay.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Councilman, Vice Mayor Stip?
No, I don't have a question. I just want to reiterate, I think this is the right time, the right point for us to move forward. I'm excited about the potential for the future of what we can do as opposed to what we've been limited by. I think the future becomes a little, a little brighter for us, and the ability to control our own destiny makes a lot more, makes a lot more sense, regardless of the lifespan of this CBDG program. We never know, year after year. But I appreciate the work, I appreciate the information, and that we're finally getting it to a, to a conclusion, so thanks.
Any other? Yes, Councilman Hampton?
Yeah, I agree as well. I think having that consistency, year after year, we can plan a little better. We don't have to negotiate or go through a metric system to try to get our allotment. It's guaranteed every single year. And now that it, that it makes sense mathematically that we actually can do it, and we're not going to need to hire a full-time person for at least a couple of years, it sounds like, that I think now is probably the better time. I know when I first got on it, I didn't know why, because we're the biggest city by far at that, at that meeting. So I think it's, I was surprised we were even on it compared, we're not Wickenburg, we're not Guadalupe, we're not Youngtown. So, but just taking our share, being more consistent, and then being able to do a lot more neat projects with that consistent money in the areas that, that we can, I think is good. So, and it can use for other things, too, I mean, economic development and also the housing, and just a lot of things we can do, so. So I think it's a good move. Thank you.
Any other comments? I have to agree with you. We've had needs and haven't been able to, to even look at them. And I can see in the future that maybe some things will be done a little faster. And I think it's a crowd pleaser for the, for the historical Goodyear, and they like things to make them proud of, too. And they are, as you said, our only historical area, and, you know, and so make the most of what you have, and I think this will help it. So thanks a great deal. All right, let's vote for it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it.
Thank you.
Oh, that was a little late one, okay. She got the count? You're fine, okay. So the last item on business, to consider adopting FY 2021 tentative budget. Finance Manager and Budget Researcher Laurie Wigan-Roth presenting. Laura?
Thank you. See if I can maneuver this thing around. If I can find my mouse on the screen. So we are in the first of the three kind of formal steps of adopting the budget and for FY 21. So what I'll do is I'll kind of go through, I was here a couple of weeks ago talking to you about the city manager's budget. As a result of some of the information that we heard from you at that session, we've made some changes, and then we've identified some other changes. So the first thing I'll do is just kind of walk you through what those changes are, both in terms of the expenditures and the resources that are involved. And then we'll just give you a high-level overview of the budget in terms of kind of the resources that are going into the budget and how they're being spent. I'll talk again a little bit about the assumptions that we use to prepare the revenue estimates that support this budget that's kind of a little uncertain, so. So in terms of the changes, we, you know, we started, we presented you a five hundred and eighty-nine point eight million dollar budget at the city manager's budget. It's now at five hundred and ninety-nine point four million, so just under six hundred thousand dollars. Kind of walk through how we got from that point, from where we were to where we are now. I talked to you verbally at the city manager's budget presentation about the need to include the operating the operating cost to open the two fire stations that are in design and construction now and will open next year, so we have added $192,400 to operate the Fire Station 181, which will open in the spring, and Fire Station 186, which will open in the winter. So those are the operating costs to get them through the balance of, you know, for a partial year in terms of next year. In both those stations, the staff are already funded, so this is just the things like the utilities and building maintenance type expenses. The court sought and received approval from restricted funding sources to continue two temporary positions using two different court funding sources, so those two are being added temporary, a one-time funded supervisor and a one-time funded specialist position. Then the CDBG item you just saw, that includes, we identified a $50,000 cost to do some of those, prepare those plans and do some of that initial work to be prepared to be a direct recipient, so we've added that to this budget. We did identify a few changes to traffic signals. There are two traffic signals planned on Camelback Road. We talked a little bit before about some of the timing involved in coming up with agreements with the parties that are involved. And so as we were having those conversations, we relooked at those signals and the realistic timeline and both of their construction has been moved into FY22. And then the third traffic signal, the one at Australia Foothills at the high school, that one's going to be slightly more expensive than we initially planned, you know, less than a $20,000 increase in that project. We also had a little bit of conversation about the SCADA control room. I think there was a question about it at the manager's presentation and I think Dan Cotterman shared that we were looking at other alternatives. They are looking to incorporate the SCADA control room into the surface water facilities, so we've removed the project that was planned to relocate those SCADA facilities to some other location and we believe we can absorb the cost of that, that project within the current surface water project budget, so that's a savings to the water department of about $760,000. We also had a project included to repair or better stabilize a retaining wall at the ballpark. That was a $1.6 million project. As we've been moving forward with the current projects that are going on in terms of safety improvements at the facility, and we also got some new cost estimates from a different vendor or contractor, and we are able to absorb the, that wall stabilization project into the budget that was provided this year for the other safety improvements. So we freed up that $1.6 million in essentially general funds. It's a ballpark thing, but as you know, we transfer general funds to support the ballparks fund. And then we had some carryover adjustments, part of which are associated with that wall project and just a, just a couple of other projects we identified that needed to carry over as we continue to fine tune things. And then we just found a couple of errors. We included too much money on the surface water project, about $9,000, and then there was a formula error in one of the budget spreadsheets, so those netted to about a $2,500 change in the budget. And then finally, there's a real big number at the bottom. There's 11 million, almost $12 million has been added to the special general fund contingency and I'll talk a little bit more about that, how we were able to do that in the next slide, but essentially that's about a $9.6 million increase in the budget. So, so that increase in that general fund special contingency, it happens from the net of some of those changes such as the ballpark and other items, but the bulk of it is coming from the fact that we have been notified that, or in the process of receiving just shy of $10 million from the state of Arizona from the CARES Act Fund. Those resources are reimbursing us for our public safety salary and benefit expenses from March into June. We should expend all of those resources this year. That means that there's $10 million in general funds, that more in the ending balance coming from FY20 than we had presented in the manager's budget, so that is the major contributor to that nearly $12 million. And then in addition, if you remember a couple of years ago, we did have a police asset management fund and other than a radio project that comes up every 10 to 15 years, it was pretty much consistently funded year after year. So we made a change to their base budget to put those basic replacements into their base budget and then we finished out the radio project that was planned with that asset management fund. That project's complete, it's been fully paid for, so we also are now closing out that police asset management fund and returning those resources to the general fund. So that added another 200, that's another $200,000 in additional resources when we finished this year than we planned in the manager's budget, so that adds a total of $10.2 million to the beginning general fund balance for FY20, FY21. Some other changes, we have a no dollar amount change based on some of the conversation that we heard when we presented the city manager's budget and that is that the non-represented salary and increase will be a 2.5% ongoing increase. If you'll recall, we had initially presented a 2.5% one-time lump sum in July and as we talked about at the manager's budget presentation, the intent would be to revisit the, the non-compensated or the non-represented salary and benefit package later in the year once the economic environment has stabilized a little bit more. I also shared verbally at the presentation of the manager's budget that we had one extra position listed in the recreation campus project, so this just reflects, it's showing you that we've removed that position, so we're now adding 40.2 positions to the city's position count, bringing our total position account to 706.2 full-time equivalent positions. That's the changes. I don't know if you want to pause for if there's, or shall I keep going?
No, you can pause if they want or you can keep going.
All right, I don't know if there's any questions about the changes or...
Anybody have any questions at the first portion? Councilwoman Zillo?
On that $10 million that we're getting from the CARES Act, is, is there something you're going to be coming back to council at some point in time on how that's going to be allocated?
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmember Pizzello. What will happen is it's being added to the general fund special contingency and we've already committed that those dollars will be allocated by council through the year, so we will come back to council with, you know, either a work session to, to get your ideas on those dollars, but we certainly already had some money set aside for the additional employee-staff raises if the economy recovered, but also the supplementals that had been submitted that because of the COVID we've not yet discussed. So we do anticipate future work sessions with council to talk about how to allocate those dollars, but they are general fund dollars one time for your consideration.
Thank you. Another, another quick question on the expense side. Has the ballpark reconciliation been completed to the point where, remember we had that loan dealing with the Indians? I forget, it was 1 million or whatever it was debt service year, I'm just throwing out numbers, I don't know if that's the exact number. And if there was any shortfall, which I suspect there would be since the season was cut, then we would have billed the Indians for that difference? Has that happened yet? And if so, have we gotten that money?
We have completed the reconciliation. We don't actually bill them until the payment is due, so we will bill them in the two, as those two payments come, and I'm sorry, I don't remember the dollar amount, but they, they are aware and agree with the reconciliation of the amounts that they owe.
All right, so when that actual debt service payment comes, that's when you bill them and that's when we get the money, is that...
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Laura Tannen?
And I'm not sure if this is a question. We talked about adding those arts issues, those Shakespeare, the other, is this where we do that or is that just going to come back later?
So because the tentative agenda is setting the cap for the budget, we are able to come back through the supplemental process and we'd be looking to utilize that special fund, the special contingency. That's correct.
All righty. All right, she's ready to proceed. All the questions asked? Okay.
All righty, so now I just want to do a quick overview of the, the budget that you're approving today. So again, it's $599.4 million. Resources have not changed other than the $10.2 million increase in the beginning balance that's resulting from the savings that are occurring this year. So basically you would see that in that general fund balance, that kind of pale pink part of the pie is now bigger, so it changes all the percentages, but essentially that's what's happening, plus the effect of those carryover revisions. I know it will eventually pick it up. On the general fund, the general fund, again, that's where the majority of that, that $10.2 million, again, is reflected here in a fund balance increase. So the general fund, we have 216, almost $217 million in general fund resources to allocate in the budget. And so then I thought I'd do is just remind you how we got to the revenues associated with those resources. Again, if you'll recall, kind of our first major revenue loss was when the Major League Baseball canceled spring training and we lost about $900,000 in revenue. And that, we only assume that that revenue loss is occurring in FY20, so we're assuming FY21's revenue will be back similar to a normal spring training season. Also mentioned to you that we had the good news that we're receiving as to revenue in FY20 earlier in the year. We thought it would be a larger amount, but we still believe we're going to receive about a million dollars this year. And then ASTA also gave us a revenue estimate for next year that we're continuing to move forward with, which is about $900,000. Sales taxes is obviously the area where we think we are most significantly impacted and I'll talk a little bit more about that as we move forward here. And then of course, we also adjusted the HERF revenues because those are primarily reached, received from people buying gallons of gas and driving places. So in terms of the sales tax estimates, just a quick reminder, we assume the deepest losses in the hotel motel and amusement areas, the things like going to the movies and, and, you know, as deep as only receiving about 25% of what we've received in similar months in the prior year. We also assume losses in restaurant and bars, I think the deepest loss we assume would be that we would only have about 50% of last April's revenue in this, in this April. We did assume a moderate decline in the retail, dropping down to 80 to 90% of what we collected in the prior years. And just as a reminder, we are benefiting from the change in the tax laws. It does allow us to receive sales taxes on those internet transactions. As I mentioned before, it won't be a one-for-one if somebody would have bought something at a brick and mortar and they buy it online. We may not necessarily get that revenue, for example, a company has to do $100,000 in business in the state before they become subject to that law, so, but it certainly is doing, we are certainly seeing an increase in that particular part of the sales tax stream. And then we assumed a spike in the March, in the food for home consumption in March and we've kept those estimates up at about 115% of prior year just based on what we were experiencing previously.
So to how it did.
Oops, I think I skipped one now. Our assumptions were that April would be the bottom of our, would be the deepest of our losses and then we still assume that we'd have larger losses in May and June and then we would improve steadily throughout '21 as we, as the economy recovers, hopefully. And then obviously later next year, we assume a little bit higher growth because the growth rates would be so low this year. And I think I have. So this is information for you on the March results. So the March results were, we collected about 1.2 more in general fund revenue, sales taxes than we had planned in the estimates we showed you. Of that, 860,000 of it came from non-construction activities. Retail did much better than we anticipated, almost 600,000 more in that one month than, than we had planned. So our estimates have so far been similar to what we practiced, which is they were conservative. In terms of April, we don't have a closed month yet, but I can share with you that April is also looking good, not quite as, much better in the non-construction areas, but construction sales tax looks like it's going to be about 1.6 to 1.7 million more in general fund revenue than we anticipated for that month. The, the rest of the, the retail is netting around 500,000, around 50,000 more for the non-food for home consumption element of it. We hope that we will have the closed month next Monday and be able to prepare April information, but so far the revenues are holding, so that's a, it's a good news as we move forward. I do have, the next two slides you do not have in the materials you've received, we just got this information late last week. What this is, and I'll kind of walk you through, it's kind of a lot of fine print on here because we, this is from an article by the Rose Law Group reporter and they're using information from the JP Morgan Chase Institute. And what this is showing you, the city, so the lighter bars that are above the line are the, let me look at mine so I can make sure I say the right thing on these. They are the February growth rates, so the lighter color bars were what the growth rates were in March of 19, over February of 19. The dark blue lines are what the growth rates were, which are all negative in the, those transac, in the credit card, and these are all credit card transactions only. So what it's, and what it's showing you is the city with, these are the, some major cities that they looked at these credit card transactions for. The first city is Phoenix. The Phoenix area has had the least impact in terms of lost, at least credit card transactions of the major cities they reviewed. The city that's on the far other end is San Francisco. It had the greatest loss in, rather than growth, in terms of loss when comparing same months and prior years. So, and what, kind of what the article was suggesting is San Francisco is the first city to have a stay-at-home order. It has had the worst impact. The next three highest COVID rates are the next, COVID rates are the next three cities with the greatest loss or greatest reduction in their growth rate and their revenues. So they're kind of suggesting that it, in the areas on the good, better side, there was lesser impacts at least so far from the COVID in, in those communities, so it seems like everybody's being impacted, but certainly you're impacted much worse if you have a higher rate of COVID cases. This chart, and again, just to remind you, these are credit card transactions only. So what this chart is showing you is the darker blue line are growth in in-store sales, so walking in the door, buying. The green bar is growth in credit card and online sales. And so the first area there with the biggest growth rate is groceries. That's probably a combination of two things happening there. One is people are shifting from restaurants... One is people are shifting from restaurants to eating at home and, and also stocked up on groceries. But probably, there's not as many people were buying their groceries with credit cards before, so it probably has a little bit of an impact that if you're buying online, you pretty much use your credit card, so if you're shifting there. So, so that may be skewed a little bit in terms of how severe that change is. But then if you go about five blue bars in, that's the restaurant and bar drop. And so we, we can see that there is a shift from restaurant and bar to food for home consumption. And again, these rates kind of align more along what we were projecting would happen and more maybe along where the rest of the country is expect, is experiencing. And so, but perhaps we aren't experiencing quite as severe as an impact as, as some of these other areas. So it's a, you know, good news story that we're getting online, tax on online sales, and we're seeing that, that things are trending better for us than perhaps in other years, So then moving on to some other areas of revenues, property tax, no change from before. We are sharing with you the information about the impact on a Goodyear home worth a value out of 100,000. We did assume the full 5% maximum allowed growth and appreciation. Essentially, a Goodyear tax on a $100,000 home would go from $173.32 to $182.02. So less than a $9 increase in, in property tax, and it's like less than 75 cents a week. And I think folks are, folks are getting some, a nice recreation campus and City Hall and those, and a fire station out of those, those taxes.
Can you, I'm going to stop you right now. I'm afraid if we go on.
Quick question on the 100,000. Is that state statute that we compare it to?
The 100,000 is what they require in the truth and taxation notification, so we tend to use that.
The reason why I ask is, reality is probably 200, 250 in Goodyear, I'm guessing.
Yeah.
But I appreciate how you're showing it, because the reality is, at least, if the maximum is a 5% increase, and again, as I always state, we don't adopt a rate, we adopt a levy, and the rate is just a byproduct of the levy. And as a result of that, if your property is going up 5%, if we keep the rate the same, you got a 5% increase. So I appreciate you showing that as far as being transparent on what we're doing. So I appreciate that.
Right. And because the rate has changed so little, it is essentially a 5% increase. In terms of other revenues, state shared revenues, we still don't have any new inform, well, I'll take that back. We did get some new information from the league late last week with new estimates on sales tax, but they did not provide new estimates for the vehicle license tax or for the HERF. So we haven't changed our estimates. Theirs were a little bit lower than, than our estimates, but they weren't different enough that we would make a change right now. So we will continue, we're moving forward with the estimates that we use, and we'll wait to see what kind of information they give us on HERF and vehicle license tax. Income tax is known, and because of the two-year lag, so we're continuing forward with that. We still have not put in our population factor. We did get that population information, but it's all blended in with their new revenue estimates, so we want to take a little more time to figure out what the population portion of our increases is, would be. Development-related activity, just a reminder that we did not assume any decline in development activity in preparing our estimates. We just used our normal approach of being very conservative with the, both the fees and the construction sales tax portion. We did this year do one, or in '21, we did one difference, which was we assumed that the one-time supplementals would only bring in 50% of the revenue. In building this year's budget, we assumed 100% revenue to offset those. I will share with you that we have had three months of lower same-month, single-family permits issued for the last three months. The first two months, we expected, because last year, we had the beginning of the new impact fees, we had a run on permits in those two months. So really, May, the May result are really the first month where it's an unexpected decline. But I would also let you know that we've already exceeded last year's total permits for single-family residences through May. And so it looks like FY '20 will be a peak on single-family building permits as we move forward from here. Also, as a reminder, there are some rate and fee studies going on, and as we just disclosed at the manager's budget, those, there's no rate and fee growth assumptions in here anticipating those studies coming forward to you early next fiscal year, so that you can act on those. Reminding you that we should expect an increase in the water rates because of the surface water project, and those utility rate changes at least usually go into effect in January. So we'll continue to move forward, bringing those to you later on. And then just in terms of expenditures, again, not much of a change, other than the contingencies piece has grown from the manager's budget because of putting that additional $12 million into the special, general fund special contingency, which is now at $17.1 million. And then general fund, this again shows you where those resources are going, a bigger chunk going to contingency. I'll also talk in another slide or two about, there's a change here relative to the CIP and transfers, and I'll talk a little bit more about that later on. The, the net change to the budget's the same. And then this just shows you the actual general fund budget that doesn't include the transfers is $150 million, and almost half of that is made up of personal services and almost a quarter of it of contingencies, which is the normal city contingent, the normal general fund contingency, plus that special contingency. Again, just quickly, their base budget covers salary increases and salaries benefits, the increases we talked about. And as a reminder, the budget right now only includes must-do supplementals, which were described basically as operating costs for new capital facilities, such as the recreation campus, the fire stations, and then obligations that we are, that we have to do. We, there are some things that we have no choice. We have contractual obligations to move forward. So the change in the CIP is, we have, we're moving into an environment, and already in an environment where we have some pretty complex funding in some of our projects, such as the surface water projects or the recreation campus. And it's very difficult for departments to know, gee, when I pay for the art on this project, I can't use the impact fees for that, or that we need to spend the bond funds before we spend the general funds or the water funds. So what we've done is we're changing how we account for multi-funded capital projects. We're accounting for them in a single fund, so there's now a general government capital fund, where our park projects like the recreation campus and the fire stations are. And what we're doing is then transferring in the funds from the, from the bond funds and the impact fees into that single fund, because it is, we've come to you with a lot of budget transfers where we are dealing with that, gee, we really need to spend this money first and that money second. So this will allow the finance department to control the order in which we spend funds on those multi-funded projects. There are certainly development agreements that it's important for us to make sure we spend, we bill those developers for those resources and we spend them in the appropriate order. So it makes it look, the budget look a little bit different, but it's a net zero change to the bottom-line budget from doing that. Just a quick overview of the CIP, it's now at 500, almost $587 million. This does reflect the ultimate funding source, so you aren't seeing a big junk, big amount of money going into those, that big capital fund, so you can kind of see where funds come from. And then this is just the projects, pretty much the same slide we showed you before, where we have the recreation campus, the surface water project, the fire stations, are all the really big projects that are in there, starting some streets projects next year, traffic signals, and then the expansion of the police ops design will begin next year, those types of projects are included as well. And then just to go over how we came up with the, so we're at the $17.1 million on the general fund special contingency. Again, that's resources that we have assumed are available, assuming the revenue estimates continue to hold. We'd come back to you mid-year to look for opportunities to spend those resources. There are certainly a number of supplementals that I think the manager would have liked to have recommended to you to fund. We heard you tonight talk about maybe advancing an art project. So there's those types of projects that this $17.1 million is intended to be spent, as long as those revenue estimates hold, then it will require your approval to spend those. And then just to show you that we, with the changes we've shown here, we're still in compliance with financial policy, the major change being that we continue to show that we're not spending all of our ongoing money on ongoing purposes. There's a million dollars of ongoing resources that have not been programmed to ongoing needs, and they're being used for one-time items instead. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions and ask that you approve the Resolution 2020-2035, adopting, tentatively adopting the budget.
Again, always a good presentation. Excuse me. Do we have any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody like to speak? You have the audience?
I thought you were asking for us.
Because I'm going to ask you after the motion for this discussion, okay? Sorry, I had a cough and I took a cough drop and now I hit the bedroom. So, will the city clerk please read Resolution Number 2020-2035 by title only?
Adopt Resolution Number 2020-2035, adopting the fiscal year 2020-2021 estimates of revenues and expenses for the City of Goodyear, including estimated property tax levy and property tax rates, as the tentative budget for fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2020 and ending June 30th, 2021, setting forth the receipts and the amounts estimated as collectible for the previous fiscal year, the amount proposed to be raised by direct property taxation for the various purposes, giving notice of the time for hearing taxpayers for adoption of budget and setting the tax levies.
Thank you. Can I have a motion in a second?
So moved.
To approve Resolution Number, you're really in a hurry, aren't you, to approve? I'll be, can I have a motion a second to approve the Resolution Number 2020-2035? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Nice, Mayor. She made a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, we have a second. So I'm going to do a roll call. I never gave you what you wanted to say. Did you have something you wanted to say?
Yes.
Discussion. Could I do that?
Yeah, it's open for discussion if anybody.
Discussion now before a roll call.
Yes.
Thank you. I just wanted to get your permission.
Yes.
You know, I want to do it right once in a while. Okay? Thank you. Councilman Pizzillo?
I appreciate all the effort, especially on your estimates, being as conservative, and it looks like it's all going to pan out as it goes. As I'm going through the city, driving through the city, I've noticed that things are really starting to pick up. My disappointment is, there's a lot of no mask when you're milling around. A lot of the people out there, whether it's in the food store or in the shopping areas, anywhere, you know, I stopped in a mall the other day, I had a mask, but very few did. So I just hope this thing doesn't take back off again as a result of that, and a lot of the people that happen to be out in the evenings. But if it continues the way it is, I think we're going to be fine. So I appreciate all the efforts, and especially the conservative approach. Thank you.
Any other? Yes, Councilman Hampton.
Yeah, also, I know this is very hard. I mean, normally, we don't have a pandemic going on, so I appreciate all of your hard work and trying to be flexible and trying to make estimates in all this time here. So to Councilman Pizzillo's point, yeah, I do hope that we get back to normal sooner than later for our economy and for the people in Goodyear. But I, I do like, I tell people that Goodyear's in a better position because of how conservative that we've been compared to some of our other cities in the area. So I do appreciate the following the policies and the direction that past councils have set before us as well. So it's definitely put us in a great position. So, thank you.
Yes, Councilman Lortel.
I want to thank you for all your hard work and for the public that's listening. The reason there aren't a lot of questions is that we all spent several hours with you in small group meetings and the city manager discussing these issues and stuff. So I think our questions have been answered. I appreciate it. And here, design a budget with a pandemic, so great job to your whole team. I appreciate it. And as Councilmember Hampton and Councilmember Pizzillo said, we are in a very good position. And I am very, I think our city is very fortunate that we are not talking about cutting services to our residents, that services are coming online as health allows, not budget, isn't the issue, it's just the health. So thank you very much for your, and your whole, I know your team's not here this time, but if you could let them know, thank you for all their hard work, because I know it's difficult for them doing it remotely and everything, that, all the hurdles you have, so thank you.
Any other comments? Yes, Councilman Hampton. Yeah. No, he's over there. Go ahead.
Well, I also want to express my thanks, Lori, and a couple of questions. I know that normally, you do a public meeting and you would do an open house. How will you be doing the public meeting this year?
We will be posting just the, the, in your handout, we had a budget overview that we normally hand out at those meetings, so we will be posting that on our website, but we haven't planned a specific event. It was too hard to try to plan anything in advance.
If citizens have questions, will they be able to connect with somebody to get their questions answered then?
They can always.
Okay. Good.
They're welcome to contact us and we will answer questions. We've also, by state statute, we've also been notifying people about the public hearing that comes up. In two weeks from now, you'll hold a public hearing before you adopt the budget and you adopt the truth and taxation change, so, but we will continue to look for ways to induce additional outreach as best we can in this environment.
Okay. And my other question is related to some of the inquiries we've been getting. Just want to confirm that there is no adverse action or budget cuts to any of our public safety.
No, there are no, there's no cut, no reductions in our base budget level for public safety. We're no, no elimination of positions, no cutbacks in any of their expenses.
Thank you.
Councilman Campbell.
Well, Lori, I want to thank you and Doug and all of your staff for this great presentation. It's wonderful to talk to you on the phone. Thank you very much. I do want to commend all of us for being so conservative and doing our due diligence, and that's why we're in the shape we're in. I would like the public to know that we did increase the budgets for both police and fire a little bit. Nothing was cut from them, and we anticipate opening new fire stations this, this year and next year. And we also, for the police department, have the design of the second floor of their police administration building in this budget, which is really a great thing for them, because we've been working on this public safety building 12 or 15 years. So hopefully, it will become a reality where it's totally finished and we can actually house all of our PD into one place. I do want to say thank you for this, the Single Capital Project Fund that you're going to put together for the CIP. I, I would suspect it would be very difficult for all these department heads to remember what money to spend first and how to do it. And it's, just makes sense that the finance department is doing all of it under one fund, and then you'll know which to allocate from which fund, because we have so many different funds to fund all the things that we are doing. And our, our wonderful city will be getting a recreation campus, and there's money in this budget to run it. It's not, we're going to build it and then shutter it. We're going to build it and we're actually going to have it open for our residents to use, and I'm so excited about that. And to get our city hall and a new library is just amazing for this, for this time right now. So fortunately, the COVID-19 has not stopped us from moving ahead, and we will continue to do that. to do that. So thank you very much.
Any other comments before I ask Bill Stip again?
Again, I haven't spoken yet.
Yes, you have.
Ironically.
Behind the scenes, go ahead.
Lori, just to briefly echo what everyone's saying, thank you and the team for your diligence in getting us through this difficult time. I, I know you work obviously very closely with Doug and as we get ready to move forward, but this probably will go down in the record books as one of the most challenging years ever, but just thank you for that, and, and please express my thanks to the rest of the team as well.
Any other comment? Well, I want to thank you. I just really want to thank all the staff and all the departments. This has been a real challenge this year, but I would compare us to other cities, and I'd say financially, we are pretty sound, and we can pay the bills, and we can still build, and that's a lot of brain power and great attitude. And thank you, city manager. I just, I'm just so proud to say we're Goodyear and we are good, so thank you. All right. I think the discussion's finished, let's, let's do a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Kano?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Lortel?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
All right, we're down to the last, and I know everybody wants a break before this work session, but let's just finish. Any comments or words you want to talk about? Then I'm going to let the city manager talk a moment. I didn't hear that. Oh, oh, I didn't see your finger up, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Lortel, you're on.
Yeah, I want to say a thank you to, this week's been really tough for people in our state and our country with everything that's going, going on, and Goodyear's not immune. But I want to say thank you to, first of all, our citizens who exercise their First Amendment right as peaceful demonstrators for issues that they wanted to bring to everyone's attention, and I think everyone heard what their issues were, and that's what our Constitution allows. I also want to thank our police officers, because it's really hard to get lumped in when you hear such horrid things that other people do. But there was something good that was posted, there was a demonstration or a march up in Australia, and there was a compliment, if I can just take a minute and read this compliment to our police officers.
Yes, thank you.
This gentleman posted on the Australia site, and he was there with his son, and he says, "My sons and I walked away from the protest past Star Point, a few servicemen standing outside their Humvees, along with a few Goodyear police officers and their sergeant. They stopped to converse with my sons, and I gave us each PowerAids and water. We talked about the protest, and the sergeant, that's the police sergeant, made a remark to my son that I will never forget. He said, 'Sons, you are witnessing history now. You have to decide what side of history you will be on when you tell your kids what's going on. I want you to know that Goodyear PD stands with you. Black lives matter to the Goodyear PD. You matter to the Goodyear PD.' I hugged him and thanked him for his words of love he gave my sons. As a former police officer who himself has lost faith in the profession, this white officer brought tears to my eye. I didn't get his name, but know that you are appreciated. Thank you.'" And I think that sums it all up, that our police and our citizens can make Goodyear and the world a better place together. So that made me very happy, and I did share that with other people and other cities, because I really think it exemplifies our, our officers and our chief and how he has handled the situation. So I just want to let you all know that.
That's a great way to end this portion, and thank you. It's a wonderful letter. So, city manager, I didn't, oh, I didn't forget you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So I am obligated and under ordinance, but it is my honor to introduce a new member of our leadership team. He is not here in person with us, but we're going to put a picture up of, of Mr. Justin Farr, and he is our new, Justin Fair, excuse me, and he's our new Chief Information Officer. He started with the city on May 29th and has hit the ground running. He came to us from UMC Health System in Lubbock, Texas, where he served as the Director of IT Infrastructure. Prior to joining UMC, Justin served as Infrastructure Supervisor and Information Security Officer for the Yuma Regional Medical Center from 2008 to 2011. Justin comes to us with an MBA, 20 years of experience, and various certifications. Justin and his wife Veronica, three children, and three fur babies are looking forward to connecting with their new community. Welcome to the City of Goodyear, Justin, we are glad to have you join our team. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, I have just one more compliment to make. Laura Jarra, this is your first really time on the stage, right? As the deputy city manager, as I remember?
Actually, my second time, alone. So first time alone, yes.
Yeah, first time alone, I thought so, you did a great job, thank you very much. Just one question, should I adjourn this and open the other one to take a break?
Mayor, you can just adjourn this, take a break, and then we'll start the other.
Okay, all right. With no further business, this meeting is adjourned.